TV, and I will call the meeting to order. Welcome to Freeport Town Council Meeting. Today is June 4th, 2024. We're at 6:15, starting our meeting this evening. Welcome to those in town council chambers and those of you joining online. Our first action this evening is to recite the pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for the record, we will find out who's here. Ah, Council of Pillsbury slipped right in.
I did. Present.
Here.
Council of Fourney. Council Lawrence.
Here.
Council of Benoit.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
And the Chair, John Egan, is here. Councilor Dan Pilch is excused for high school graduation week activities. Our next order is to waive the reading of the minutes from our last meeting on May 21.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any reason to take the minutes for discussion or dissection? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've adopted the minutes. Our next item is announcements, and I have a couple to go through. The town is looking for interested and qualified individuals to fill partial terms on the Board of Appeals, the Board of Assessment and Review, Complete Streets Committee, Coastal Waters Committee, and Police Advisory Committee, and Winslow Park Commission. The terms are abbreviated, so it's a good opportunity to volunteer and check out and see if that group or committee that you might be interested in is a good fit. I'd like to also provide a little bit of update on our comprehensive plan. This can seem like a more tedious or dull part of our municipal process, but I can assure you that it's actually a vital document for the next 10 years of activity in our community. So it's really important that we get good input from the general public. We have an excellent consultant and team that's working on our comprehensive plan. I encourage you to learn more about it. You can go to the website for the comprehensive plan at futurefreeport.com. I encourage you to take and share the community survey, which allows you to share your thoughts and create a vision for Freeport. And that is also available on the futurefreeport.com website. It's a freeport-future-survey. We'll be having our first comprehensive plan workshop for the general public at 6:00 PM on the 12th. That's next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, at Freeport Community Center. The project team will be presenting some data highlights from the inventory chapters, which is the segment of the plan that collects data, and some initial results from the visioning survey. And you'll have a chance to share ideas. The comprehensive plan development is a two-way communication plan, so we really want to hear from folks. You can share your ideas through open-ended activities, maps, you can submit something in writing, you can submit something on email. All of your input will be helping us inform the vision statement and our next steps. And you can visit the website for more information, futurefreeport.com. A reminder that absentee ballots are now available for the June 11th, 2024 primary election. They're available until 6:00 PM on this Thursday, which would be the 6th of June. Please contact the Clerk's office for further information. Also available by lottery, we have two adult resident commercial shellfish licenses and one non-resident student commercial license. Applications may be submitted to the Clerk's office between June 1st and June 15th. So that's underway right now. Other announcements from other councilors. Councilor Smith?
I just wanted to acknowledge town staff at the transfer station for another wonderful spring cleanup that was yesterday and today. I, yes. Well, you've still got 42 minutes, if we can wrap this up, Chair Egan. You might be able to get there. But wonderful to see everybody in the community, but particularly town staff, and they're delighted to take so much at this time of year. So I really appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to acknowledge is, speaking of town staff, who I believe is our oldest town employee, Janice Fogg, who directs traffic on Main Street at both Holbrook and Nathan Nye. When the school buses leave the high school and Moore Street, was working yesterday on her 91st birthday. And I wanted to acknowledge that.
Fantastic. Daryl?
I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the people who helped us on the time capsule event, Freeport Fire Company, who bought all the t-shirts for the students and people that participated, Freeport Lioness Club, who did the food for the kids and the other people who were there, Public Works had assisted in trying to find our old time capsule that we worked successfully in, and also the grounds crew who helped put it back together. So even though we didn't find the old capsule, it was a fun event, we had a lot of people there, so I wanted to thank them. They did a great job. Appreciate it.
Great to hear. Any other announcements? I want to extend my appreciation to Tom Pierce, our audio engineer, for reluctantly but professionally bringing lots of very expensive and elaborate equipment out to Memorial Park in the rain for the Memorial Park ceremony after the parade. I don't believe we lost anything important, other than the mic that used to be attached to the podium here. So if that was the only casualty, I think we're way ahead. So thanks, Tom, for adapting to that environment, and it was a great gathering of people at Memorial Park on Monday. All right, our next item is information exchange. This is a chance for councilors to share updates from committees, constituent communications, other things going on in the town. I have a couple, but I want to open it up for others. Council of Benoit?
So on May 24th, the Social and Racial Equity Committee met. The manager and I have started working with that committee to transition from an ad hoc committee to a permanent committee. You also may recall that this committee was working on an anti-graffiti ordinance in response to a few incidents last fall. With the guidance of the manager, this committee has pivoted to an anti-graffiti program instead, which is aimed at allowing the town to remove graffiti within reason, with permission from the property owner. The hope is that this will allow a faster response to unwanted and offensive graffiti, as that was the major concern with the incidents we had last fall. As we develop this more, it will come to council, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Other items? I just have a couple of things I want to share. Coming up in August, on August 25th, we are fortunate that the U.S. Navy Bluegrass Band is going to be here visiting Freeport and have asked to play a concert, which we're going to host at Memorial Park on that day. And concurrent with that, there's been a number of conversations with leaders at Meeting House Arts and also from American Legion for the council to have a specific and articulated veteran recognition ceremony as part of that concert, and to designate that day as a Vet Recognition Day in our community. This is an idea that I'm just hatching here. No, I'm not hatching it. I'm just sharing it. So there's some details to be worked out, but if you'd like to participate in that, I'm sure we can get a group together to work with the community members who are already motivated to make that happen. So I'm very much in favor of that and looking forward to participating and sharing with that, as well as listening to the music from the U.S. Navy Bluegrass Band. When is that? August 25th. So, just around, just around the corner. Great, great. I'd also just like to ask the manager what our follow-up process will be for dealing with airboat noise complaints. I know we've had a lot of discussion around what the town can and mostly what the town can't do in terms of regulating airboat noise or watercraft noise on navigable water. So I know in the past, we've had a lot of conversation, and we can't do much, and there was some effort with a state group last year or the year before, but I don't know where we are now. So we're getting lots of emails about airboat noise.
I haven't gotten all of the emails, so I haven't been, I haven't had that pleasure. But after receiving one, and I think I responded to that person for you, we had a stakeholder group that met with individuals from the state, property owners, and people who are using the airboats. And ultimately, that ended up being a pretty lengthy report back to the legislature. Legislature has adopted decibel limits for airboats. The airboat that is currently in use has passed the state standard, so they're at or below what the state sets as a threshold. So at this point, we really don't have the ability to do more. However, I think it would be really important to let people who are emailing you know or calling you know that they could call their complaints into the Freeport Police Department, who then makes, yeah, Chief smiled at me, yep, who will then forward that data. Number one, attempt to respond. And number two, forward the complaint on to the state where they're keeping a pretty extensive record of complaints.
Do you know what department of the state that is? Is it Marine Fisheries or is it?
Marine Patrol.
Marine Patrol?
Department of Marine Resources.
Marine Resources, got it, okay. Just want to have the right information to share. Okay, and this may be, this is kind of out of the blue sky here, but I know we've had presentations and some community conversation about an eventual skate park that is driven by citizens and will be funded privately, but looking to potentially use some town land for that. And I don't know where they are. I haven't talked to that group, but I know we had some regulatory conversations about what might be necessary, given the location that they had identified.
So we, I was able to have a conversation with Albert Press Graves, who should be a name from the past, who has come back to assist us on a part-time basis.
Thank you, Albert.
He's very good at what he does. But he ran some numbers, and at this point, from a simple regulatory basis, with waste, with our municipal separated storm sewer system, MS4 permit, we think we're okay there. They likely will have to put in additional stormwater mitigation and control measures there. I think that we still, I think Caroline was looking into whether or not we have a site location of development plan there, which just means that whatever they do would ultimately have to
Fit under that, yeah.
Fit under that as well.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get an update. Somebody asked me about it. And lastly, I know we've had some comments about dogs and dogs on leash and off leash on town-owned trails, and I just want to, I guess, find out what people are thinking about that, and I think that there's probably some work we can do on signage and communication. And I'd like to see if there's anybody interested in participating in those conversations besides myself. I bring my dog on town-owned trails all the time, and I really enjoy that, and I think so does my dog.
You know I do as well, so I'm happy to be part of that conversation as well. Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's appropriate that not everybody is a dog lover, and that we make available portions of our town trail system that are dog-free. But there's also a significant opportunity for both the dog and the dog owner to enjoy our trail, so we can maybe just work out a plan on how we can sign, put signage on those to identify those places.
I also think there's probably value in just, just a general etiquette reminder, right? If you are a dog owner, know your animal and pick up after them, and if they don't have good recall, act accordingly.
Yep. Right. All right, that's all I have for announcements. And I think our, I'm sorry, information exchange, our next item is our town manager's report. Sophie?
All right, I am going to try something new and exciting. So the first thing I wanted to make people aware of was just a reminder of what our website looks like today. When I came to Orno, I'm sorry, when I came to Freeport from Orno, I know, I'm getting better, too.
She's from away.
I, I think even in my interview, I talked about how difficult it was to find information, and how excited I was because we use the same platform that I was used to in the previous community. And Tom Pierce, who was the resident website person, and I sat down and I said, "Okay, Tom, so you just need to do this and this and this, and you'll be set to go." And Tom was like, "I don't know what you're talking about." And so Tom called a website person that I know and that taught me how to use the platform, and learned that that person couldn't even do the things I wanted them to do. And when Tom called Civic Plus, the company that did our website, they let us know that Freeport was the last customer in the nation on that web platform. So what we did was we simply updated the current website. It's still under construction in ways where we're moving information around. This is not a logo or branding exercise. I just want to be really clear about that. We tried to make it look pretty, but a branding exercise takes other work and community work, and so I'm not trying to shortcut that. So I just want you to remember that if you wanted to know when the next town council workshop was, you had to like go through the days of the week. Just remember that. And you had to kind of have some intuition as to where things might be. Municipal mines work different than regular people, and it can be really difficult, because where we would put things, the general public might not look there. So, let me, I want to refresh this, Tom.
He's going to make it happen for you.
There we go. Okay. You gonna do it over here, too? Oh, I missed it. All right. So this is the new platform, and what you'll see is it has an agenda center on the sidebar. The agenda center is actually a place where all the agendas and minutes and links to whatever media we have in terms of audio or video would be in one location. So when we look at town council, you can see we have started to build it out, and you would just click on, there's a town council meeting on June 4th. You click on it. You click on it?
Oh, you're over here, not over there.
Yeah.
Sophia, you're over here.
Oh, well, I still, it's not opening it. But if you were doing this, it would
It's opened it a bunch of times.
Oh, all right. Oh, there you go. Anyway, your agenda would pop up with your embedded links for background material. Then
Minutes and video on the right.
Yep. And, and it goes down for every committee that we have. There would be that ability to do that. People can report a concern now. You have a general concern. There is a form. Okay, it doesn't like this for whatever reason. There's a form that pops up. You can report it, and it will go to the appropriate department, and they can get back to you. I'm not signing in, thank you.
Is that just through email? It would send an email to that department or?
Yep. So the other thing that happens is, if you notice these lovely boxes, they're all links, they're graphic links. We can edit them on the fly. This afternoon, I decided we should let people know about the data vision, what we learned about the comp plan survey, and how they can participate in that. So I'm excited. Pete Yazakavich, who will be our new communications person, and Tom worked extensively on this website, and some of this, they actually customed to give us what we, what we were looking for in functionality.
When does it go live?
Goes live tomorrow morning at
Wow.
11:00 AM. And if you look, you've still got the calendar, if you're wedded to go by days of the week. And there are, there's municipal news, and we still have those departmental pages where people can get information, but this really lets us direct people to the nine things that we think are the most important in any given day.
It's great. I love it. It's easy.
Yeah, it's great. I love it. It's easy. You get to places in like two or three clicks, and that's awesome. The only thing I noticed is you have comprehensive plan forum and comprehensive plan visioning. Is that, does that go with the comprehensive plan, or is that five-year and the town visioning plan?
No, if you look, the second line under comprehensive plan forum says June 12th at 6:00 PM, 53 Depot Street in Freeport.
Right.
So you show up, it takes you to that. The one below it, the visioning, says click here to take the survey.
Right. The question is, are they together? And is that for the five-year plan, or is that?
This is for the 10-year comp plan.
Okay. Can we put that, the only reason I ask is the comprehensive plan visioning kind of sounds like the town visioning that we just went through.
Oh, so I might change the language to survey. I will tell you, I quickly threw these together this afternoon to show you what it
It looks great, but that was the only, that's a little confusing.
I would agree.
So we'll try not to be confusing, but you remember my caveat at the beginning that municipal mines aren't regular?
I get it, but no, it looks great. A lot of work, thanks.
Yeah, Tom, Pete, and the team, because I am not a designer at all. But
And Chris.
And Chris, with all the
Encyclopedia of town knowledge.
Well, and hours that she spent migrating information.
Yeah.
So this has been the biggest project that we have worked on, and it only took six months to the day.
Well, you have like five years of re-upping, right?
That's been done.
So beyond that, I really don't have a lot to report. You've stolen my airboat thunder. We, Earl and Chief Goodman, continue to work on the traffic calming data collection for Route 125, Lent Road and Grant Road intersection.
Saw that.
Some very interesting data came through, and I understand why people say it's, when you turn out, you really have to go fast. So we're going to have to really look at some traffic calming there. Beyond that, I, I was working on a website for you.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you, Sophie. Any questions for the manager? All right, our next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. So this is a chance for you to come up and speak into our brand-new microphone at the podium, and let us know what's on your mind. Please introduce yourself and let us know where you're from.
My name is Randy, and I'm from the Pleasant Hill area. Lived here for many different years, 60 years or so. Just a little bit of history. I have some comments to make about the climate agenda and the plan. Basically, there's a lot of work that went into this plan, and I think that we should be thankful for the energy that went into it. I do have some comments, however, a little history. When I was growing up, we were burning trash, or we weren't burning trash, but our neighbors were, back in the 60s. On my street, Park Street, there was a sewer plant that had a primary treatment only, and it used to dump into the frost gully, which is also where we got our water from. It was on the other end, but it was still dumping into the, into the frost gully reservoir. The dump, there was no recycling. Bottles and cans littered the roadside, and the Andes Gargan was one of the 10 dirtiest rivers in the United States. Just a little background. So the plan, the plan talks about recycling. I think that's something everybody can get behind. Talks about reusing, zero landfill, something I'm very interested in, because I'm an environmentalist. Preparation and adaptation, those are the two most important things that we can talk about, I think, relative to climate change. So we're not saying that climate change doesn't exist. I say, I say "we're." I only represent myself, so I shouldn't say "we're." But I think that preparation and the adaptation is the route to go. However, I can't support the use of tax dollars for electrify everything. And I wanted to make that known. It restricts the freedom of choice. I think that's an issue. I think that energy should be eclectic, not electric, and we should be able to choose what we need to choose, whatever mode is that makes the most sense for the individual. I think that EVs and so forth, electric devices are very expensive, they're heavy, and in the end, it's questionable impact. What difference is it going to make to the weather or climate in the town of Freeport? Even if we went to all net zero tomorrow, with China and India and composing 2.7 billion people, a town of 8,700 really doesn't have much impact. So I think that the ROI is quite questionable. In addition, it strains the grid. One of my biggest concerns is the Democratic Republic of the Congo. Who cares about that, right? It's not in our backyard. But the environmental impact of the mining is just, it has decimated the, that particular area, including the rainforest. Now, you want carbon sequestration? The rainforest is going to be a lot more important to me than something that's happening in our backyard. So there's widespread pollution, loss of habitat, human rights violations, like you can't believe. None of this money is going back to the people that need it. They make $2 a day, basically. It's all controlled by the Chinese, and children are digging in tunnels underground, 30 to 60 feet down, in these holes that are like three feet in diameter. So I don't know about you, but I can never support child labor for anything, for any reason. And I just wanted people to know that, to become familiar with it, and consider that when you're looking at the budget for, for electrify everything. I would think that you might want to itemize that budget, look at it. I think it's too heavy on the electrify everything portion, and more should be spent on the adaptation and preparation. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Hi, I'm Deb Milletay. I live in Freeport. First of all, I would, I've got two items I would like to thank Randy Roy. I appreciate everything he said, and he has done a lot of research, and he, I understand, works in that field as well. So hear his words and listen to a professional who has done a lot of work in this. Thank you. Second item, I would urge the town council to support tax stabilization. In this town, there's a lot of people struggling with the costs of things that have jumped up in the last three or four years to unbelievable amounts. And that's, that's what I'd like to say. Thank you very much for all your work and service. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anik Milletay of the same, 75 South Freeport Road. Also speaking, seconding Mr. Roy's comments against the electrification of Freeport. The technology is nowhere near as advanced or safe enough for broad adaptation and mandates for the population. Certainly, our 1970s grid needs far greater investment of capital and upgrades to accommodate the broader load that's anticipated. Not least, we have a human right to not be completely electronic Not least, we have a human right to not be completely electronically connected to every single last thing using QR codes, waiting in line. Certainly, main sub-zero winters are not, don't equip us to use electronic, electro batteries, don't hold a greater charge in cold, sub-zero temperatures. That's the basic consideration thereabouts. It's enough to keep batteries in the fridge, et cetera, et cetera. Seconded to on tax stabilization, we need help, as much help as we can get in the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, everyone. Janice Flynn, Freeport District Four. I want to echo and agree with a lot of what's been said about the electrify everything. And it was really interesting listening to the workshop. I was encouraged because I think a lot of the things that as a taxpayer, I'm, you know, concerned with is the impact to the citizens here. I heard about impact to global, impact to, but what impact is that electrify everything going to have on all of the citizens of Freeport? I think this, people in Freeport have done so much with recycling and gardening and, you know, I have, I don't know, maybe eight or 10 battery-operated tools for the yard and all. But, you know, all of that costs the citizens so much money and they're already doing so much. And I think most of that plan has put the cart way before the horse. Our money would be better off stabilizing the grid and figuring out how to get the grid to support all of this electrification. I don't know if there's a count. I haven't looked at it. I mean, I have it at home in my, you know, notepad of how many times the electricity was out this past year. Let's talk calendar year. And from what I'm, I'm from away, I've only been here seven years. But people say that the electricity has gone out more in the last three years than it has in 15 years. I don't know that because I don't have history here. But, you know, we could, we need to do it better. I mean, I don't understand why the money isn't being spent on, how do we get the electricity on 24/7? Before we give incentives to people to buy battery-powered things, we're going to all have to plug them in. And I wouldn't live here without my generator. And what, how does the generator operate? It's fossil fuels. So we just really have to be mindful of the impact to everyday citizens. What can they afford? How do they have to live? And somebody was talking about insulation. Money would be better spent going to that. Helping them improve their own daily situation as opposed to, and improve the grid as opposed to forcing them to buy or incentivizing them to buy things that aren't going to last and aren't going to work when it's really cold out. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We'll have an opportunity for online participants to comment a little bit later on in the agenda. I don't want to cut off anybody if anyone's interested in coming up to the microphone. Thank you for participating. It's always great to get the public joining our meetings. Our next item is to take action on our action item agenda. We have a public hearing and a couple of relatively routine items to tackle this evening. But our public hearing is on our budget. So if anybody's interested in, in following where we are with our municipal budgeting process, that's where the public hearing is on. And I don't see a consent agenda. Do we not?
There is none.
There is no consent. That may be a first. I'm not sure. I've ever seen a meeting without a consent agenda. All right, so we're going to, the first of our public hearings is for a special amusement permit for the renewal by the Harris Seacat Inn. We're going to open up a public hearing before we have discussion about that special amusement permit renewal requested by the Harris Seacat Inn. Is anyone here wishing to participate in a public hearing for the special amusement permit renewal by the Harris Seacat Inn? Any online hands up for participation in the public hearing?
Nope.
Only once. Okay. I will go close the public hearing and take the discussion up here to the council. I'll read it just to get it on the table. Be it ordered that a special amusement permit renewal for the Harris Seacat Inn be approved pending code and fire rescue endorsement.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any conversations? We have the application in our packets this evening. Any questions for the manager or other town staff on this special amusement permit renewal? Not seeing any questions. I guess we'll go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero. Chris, okay. Congratulations to the Harris Seacat Inn for your special amusement permit renewal pending code and fire rescue endorsement. Our next public hearing is on the FY '25 operating capital and TIF budgets. That's tax increment financing. These are three slices of the town of Freeport's budget for the upcoming fiscal year, which starts on July 1. The operating budget is just what it sounds like. It's what it takes to run the town government. The capital budget is for depreciable asset acquisitions or purchases for equipment that support our budget. It is worth noting that all of the expenditure in the capital budget comes from a reserve account and is not a burden on the property tax budget. And that's due to excellent forethought from the, from councils 15, 20 years ago. But also mostly from expert management by our fiscal director, Jessica Malloy, that we're able to fund the capital budget from reserve accounts. The third slice of our budget is the decisioning on what to do with the funds that are in a TIF fund or a tax increment financing fund. Those are a couple of different districts around town where the property taxes are deposited into that account for a particular purpose related to those neighborhoods in that area. And that's the third piece of our budgeting. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on our 2025 operating capital and TIF budgets. Anyone wish to comment or address the council on the proposed budget?
Hi, my name is Chalmers Hardmert. Excuse me. 11 Somerset, the apartments across from the fire barn down there. I have a request, and that is that in the capital budget, the description that was put together was really nice. There was a narrative about what's happening. In the operating budget, I didn't see that at all. And I've talked to our town manager about this and other people. And my perplexity comes from, I don't understand what the new staff is. That is, it sounds as though from various mentions that we're going to have additional staff, but there's no listing of, here's what's, here's what's going to happen in the town manager's office and in other parts of the, of the town. And I would have appreciated that there's a narrative for the coming budget year as to who's doing what. Thank you.
Thanks, Chalmers. I think we can probably get to that in our discussion of the budget. Anyone else wish to make comment during the public hearing on the budget? No hands up online?
No hands up online.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open up the conversation with the council. So we've been talking about this for several months in terms of getting the budget ready. Jessica, I might ask, or Sophie, to address the question that was just there about in terms of a very high-level narrative summary on the operating budget in terms of the changes specifically around positions?
I can do that if you'd like me to take the, take the, when I'm wrong, you jump right in.
If you would like to, I'd be more than happy to have you.
So in this budget, we have informed the council of the intent not to fill the town engineer position. And instead, we just lost an assistant town manager slash HR director. And this budget reallocates.
Who retired.
Who retired. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. So we filled the HR component, but Judy was just after 33 years, so good that I need to, I need two people. So we're also, so we want to reallocate that position from engineering to the assistant town manager position in the town manager's office. And that's the sum total. But as we sit here tonight, what is not in the budget that I wanted to talk with council about is the general assistance. So as you are aware, this is a mandatory program that we must offer. Jessica and I have, and Courtney, have worked diligently to look for alternatives. There is one other potential alternative out there. I don't know how happy I am with it because it feels very far, very distant, very bureaucratic as opposed to local. And so, given the purpose of this general assistance program and the spectrum that you can operate it on, I would feel much better to have it closer. I think ultimately, it would likely save the taxpayers money. So based on the information we got from Freeport Community Services, it takes anywhere from the 20 hours of staff time that we were paying for to 55 hours of staff time per week to facilitate general assistance. I am recommending that we bring in a full-time position simply because in our world, it's really hard to find, train, and retain part-time individuals. Especially for a position that is probably along the lines of project management. So there's a lot of regulatory pieces and relationship pieces. I would share that position if there is extra time with our alternative response program at the police department. And also with kind of the special projects piece that comes out of the town manager's office. One of the things I would see this person doing as time allows would be to work with our alternative response officer to begin to build some of those neighborhood hubs, those resilience hubs that are a priority for council and some other things along those lines that are about connecting with and identifying people who might have needs. So at this moment, that position, Jessica, has new numbers for you. I asked her to put it in the budget. The budget still also includes a $21,000 unrestricted contribution that is voluntary to Freeport Community Services. So that is really up to the town council to decide whether you want to mitigate for this year or hold the course that we've had in previous years. In my last manager's update, I detailed the funds that have been allocated and will continue to be allocated. Some required and some voluntary. In addition, I am recommending that we bring in, Jessica doesn't know about this, $25,000 initial, more from the TIF program to fund economic development projects. Because the budget that's currently in the TIF program, the TIF budget only will fund salaries and benefits. And I think another $25,000 would be helpful to fund the projects. As you may recall, those tax increment financing dollars do not immediately impact the tax rate for this year.
Just as a context, the discussion about the position for general assistance coordinator is in response to a decision made by Freeport Community Services Board of Directors to terminate the contract that they've been performing as the agent to administer general assistance for three years? At least three years. And we just got that notice in May, late May.
Would you propose that position to be part-time or full-time, Sophie?
I would propose that the position be full-time, understanding that full-time here is 37 and a half hours a week.
I, yeah, I just wanted, I'm glad because I was going to flag that. I don't think the 20 hours was enough. I think that was clear, so I just wanted to.
Daryl?
Probably don't have a choice. We're required by law to have that.
Yep.
So I was very disappointed with the decision at the community center, but that's what the decision was made. So with that being said, I understand that we were giving to the community center, it was the $24,000 a year for that. So I think that needs to be removed to go back to help offset the cost we have here. And the other thing I'd like to propose, I probably won't get a lot of support for this, but the other one that I think should be returned to town is what we participate in their capital for replacement of buildings. And the reason for that is many years ago, the town gave $150,000 on the capital to the building with the understanding that would be repaid. And it wasn't anything to do with the board of directors of the community center, but that was decided not to be repaid. So I don't think we should have the responsibility for us as the other taxpayers to be laying out additional funding for capital for the building. So I believe that's $5,000 a year.
So, yeah, so I just want to quickly kind of go through that. And I don't want to take up a lot of time, but there, I sent out a report last week that detailed the funding and I just want to bring it, not in March. I just want to bring it to your attention because that $5,000 is actually part of a lease that we're required to pay. So if I could just real quickly recap this, so all the councils are on the same page. It's kind of buried in here and I don't want to. So the town currently has a 50-year lease that was signed in 2011 where the town pays Freeport Community Services a payment, annual payment that was initially $35,000. It increases per the lease by CPI. So for this year, that amount was $57,250.64. The lease also requires the $5,000 annual contribution to its capital fund and for the town to plow snow from the FCS parking lot. So for that lease, the town gets a room in the basement for storage of its archival material, so old records. And we get first call on a meeting room also in the basement, I think. A meeting room.
Yeah, I can't remember.
And we are allowed, as we can fit in, to the big meeting room space. So then we had the contract where we were paying initially $21,000 a year and it went up to $24,000 a year for general assistance administrative services. The police department pays an additional $2,400 a year for the alternative response provider office over there. You have been donating, so not required, $5,000 for summer camp scholarships and providing a $21,000 non-directed operational contribution each year. In 2022, understanding the additional increase that ARPA, I mean, that COVID may have or would continue to have on FCS, the town council contributed a general operating services contribution in the amount of $112,500 to FCS and allocated another $40,000 in ARPA funds for direct payments to support FCS gap housing needs and efforts. So when they have somebody that needs those funds, the bill comes directly to Jessica and she pays it. and she pays it against that. So just want to make clear, there are lots and pots of money there, but that's how.
Do we still use the archival storage over there? I thought we moved that all to historical society.
Not all of it, and it really doesn't matter because it's a 50-year lease that has, I read it, and it has absolutely no mechanism for renewal, renegotiation, anything in it. So you can spend legal money. I don't, I wasn't aware council would want to go down that path, but I don't see any mechanism for saying, you know, for us to break the lease or renegotiate at this point.
When does that lease end?
2061.
It won't be around then, I don't think. So I'll just point out that if you do the quick math, that's a lot of zeros that the council has supported for FCS, and they've done a lot of really good work, and they look after and provide services to a lot of people in our community. And the recent decision was quite abrupt, and it's left Sophie and Jessica in a position where all we can do is add someone to our town budget because we have to, by state mandate, as a community, provide GA services. And I completely concur that I don't think we could get away with a part-time person because we couldn't find someone or hold on to them. So it is going to be a full-time slot. Daryl?
Thank you for that information, Sophie. So then, you know, the summer program is a wonderful program. I would not propose cutting that. I would, however, would like to look at that $24,000 and the $21,000 that we're currently giving for donations, that is not going for any particular program or any specific services being provided down there. Because I'm sure when we get the final number from Jessica on what a full-time position, you know, with benefit, that's going to be far above that.
The $45,000, yeah.
So just to be clear, when Jessica and I sat down and made the decision to add the full-time position into the budget, we assumed that you would stop the contract. You know, the contract has been broken, so I think you have two years, two months, so $4,000 because we pay through the end of the termination period. And the rest of that has been absorbed by the not insignificant cost of a full-time position.
So that's already accounted for, but you did not account for the $21,000 in donation, which I think.
That's above my pay grade.
I would certainly like to bring that to the table for discussion.
Can we ask the chief if the alternative response officer has to be in that location? Does that really work best for that position? I don't want to undermine, we're having great success with that position. The last thing I want to do is try and fix something that's not broken.
I think it was the, it's the best location that we had at the time that he was given that office. I think there are good connections over there at FCS before him. There seems to be a lot of traffic there, so I don't think it's a bad location.
Great. That's, I just wanted to confirm that. We in a place where you want to hear an amendment?
If you would like, I can give you an update on some of these numbers to assist you as you talk about some of these other changes. I can tell you what changes have been made and what the impact is.
Sure. Let's go through that.
Perfect. So based on the last council meeting, I included $3,300, which was the addition of $750 for Oasis to match what their requested contribution was. A $50 increase to the snowmobile club, which matches their request that they were looking for. Southern Main Agency of Aging, putting them in the budget for $1,000, and farmers market support of $1,500. So those four items make up, hey, thanks, now I can see. I'm used to being told not to touch the microphone, as you noticed. So those three items make up the $3,300. In addition to that, council discussed allocating $100,000 for the senior property tax relief. I've removed $20,000 based on the contract termination for the GA services, and I included $110,700 for the GA position and benefits. So that's wages and benefits for that position. So the net budget impact was $194,000. That impact on the projected mill rate, if you remember from my April 23rd memo, a transmittal letter of the budget, we were projecting an 85-cent mill rate impact with, sorry, even with glasses on, I must need new ones. The municipal impact was 30 cents at that time. With these changes, the total mill rate impact is projected to be 92 cents, with the municipal impact being 38 cents. So an 8-cent change with that $194,000. So that's where that stands as of now.
Thank you, Jessica. That's very informative. Daryl?
I guess the question is, I don't have on the additional ARPA money that went in because the ARPA money was given to them. Can you explain that to me again? Would that be available to come back into our coffers and be reallocated for something if we wanted to look at what our ARPA funds were giving at that time to Freeport Community Services?
So the appropriation that was done that Sophie referenced of about $112,000 was a one-time payment to FCS for their services, basically. So that went as a one lump sum. It was not dependent on care, transactions, traffic, any of that. So that's already been paid and accounted for through ARPA. The only remaining funds that, again, are not given to FCS, it's given to the people that FCS is assisting, that need housing help. So you have that, you have about, I believe it's 13,000 remaining in that gap need for housing fund.
And if that's not gone by the turn, by?
If it's not contracted out by the end of this, by December of this year, yeah, we'll have to reallocate to contracted out.
But it'll come back to, okay.
It'll have to be under contract by the end of the year, and then you have to 2026 to spend it.
Daryl?
So with that allocated for housing, which is a huge issue, I'm sure when we have a new employee coming in to do general assistance, probably housing may be a need that needs to come forward.
Yeah, they're going to need that.
That would certainly be.
I think we're going to need that.
Yeah, that would certainly be money that a new GA director could use to assist residents.
That's what I was trying to get.
Yeah.
So I saw a lot of heads go up and down. Would it be fair for us to just let FCS know formally that those funds will be coming in-house or, because they had asked for those for gap housing, not specifically related to general assistance?
We're going to have a GA person. We have to give them some resources to work with in the program.
If I'm, if I can give an opinion, you know, these are not funds that we give to FCS to allocate at their discretion. It's an application or a voucher that comes to the town on behalf of a resident that needs to pay first and last month rent or whatever to get into housing and get them out of a situation where they're having to utilize general assistance, you know, currently. So it's to help them make that bump. So it's not, it's not GA per se, which is why we labeled it gap need for housing because there was a need between what people were receiving for GA and what they actually needed to get into more permanent housing options for them. But that's not to say, you know, a person in-house, whether it's a person in-house or whether it's FCS, that money can be used to get people into their housing options.
If we're going to be running the program, makes sense that we should have the resources to do that.
But wouldn't it, I'm thinking of it where it's, you know, if they're getting, if someone needs that assistance, they should be able to get it, and if it's not going directly to FCS.
It's because someone has gone to.
Because they need it.
The provider of.
Right.
General assistance and is, but I see what you're saying. It was, it was provided to FCS outside the capacity of general assistance.
So can we, do we have to say we're bringing it in-house or not? Can it kind of just be like a, we might have to use that money too?
It can sit in ARPA to be available. It wasn't specified to only come through FCS.
Right.
So whomever provides the voucher or the application, you know, for that.
Makes sense that if we're the, we're staffing it, and the GA administrator is a town employee, that's where people are going to say, oh, go see the GA person at the town hall, and that's where the request is going to come from.
If I could just finish my thought. So I think it will take time for that news, that change to travel. So I would hate for someone to go to FCS because that's what the directive or the norm has been to then, who's in, potentially in crisis, who is needing of that money, to then have to go around, or run around to now come to a new GA person at the town hall. So I'm not saying it needs to stay with FCS. I'm saying we just, we'll have access, we're going to tell them that we might use that money too.
And I would clarify, FCS does not know what the balance, they're not tracking what the balance is of that account. It's vouchers that come through the town, and we issue payment to whomever the property.
It feels a little nitpicky to kind of say, FCS, you can't use it anymore.
Yeah.
I don't want, yeah.
And there is a period of time. You know, we're talking about through the end of August for this contract. If people go to FCS and need assistance through the end of August and/or, you know, the time period of that contract ending and a GA director starting, you know, it's, whether that goes through the town manager office or however that is established, any one of those, I'll call it governing bodies, can use that funding to help a citizen in need.
Right. And my number one priority is making sure that it gets to somebody in need, not how, but just that it gets there.
Yeah. And as it currently stands, it will. There's no action that needs to be taken to say, FCS can't spend this. You know, if, if the directive of council is we don't want applications coming through FCS, that's a different discussion is how I would propose that. You know what I mean, that that person?
We can see where it is at the end of August, too. If the contract is terminated.
That's what I was going to recommend. Keep the, as long as the contract's around, they have the gas, but as soon as the contract ends, we bring it back in.
Yep.
Daryl?
Is the, this additional funding we've got, there was a need that was identified to us. We answered that need, and I think we answered it generously. They have made a business decision, they don't want to do that. With that decision being made, that the responsibility falls back to us. So I think we should take every opportunity to try to lessen the impact on a taxpayer by taking these revenues that were given down there for the very specific program that we are going to be doing here in the future, and those funds should be coming back and then reallocated for that. And during the transition, you know, unfortunately, they may have to go there and say, you got to go to town hall. But I know with GA, many years working here, that's what we did. We did a lot of housing, we got them out there, and so, you know, I think these funds need to come back, just as a pure business decision that they based on, and that's fine. And now we'll come back, and we're going to regroup, and we'll have some of the funds not to offset all the costs, but it will certainly help us get the program running appropriately.
So is that the 21 and the 24?
Yes. I was looking at the 21, the 24, and that housing, and I don't know specifically if that comes or not, but that's.
It's already here, so.
It's here.
It's already here. Yep. So I think, to be specific, probably those two points, John, would be, yeah, what I would like to see. I would, I'll make that a motion if it's appropriate now, or is this just going to be a discussion?
I just want to make sure we're ready to go for a motion. A couple more comments. Matt?
So I am disappointed in how this has all played out. I think the timing's particularly challenging. It's also really off-putting looking at myself on that screen now, so maybe we could, maybe we could put it someplace else.
Matt, you're beautiful.
So I think that, I'm feeling some emotions and tension around this. I'm also cognizant of the fact that I don't know all the services that have been provided or are being provided and what the money goes to. And perhaps there's a middle ground, and I think that we, who I don't want to disadvantage are the people who have been receiving services from FCS and who need those services and who, if we had this very discussion four months ago, we would say, FCS is doing a fantastic job, they're serving our community, they're doing what they're supposed, they're supposed to do. I think we owe it to ourselves to bring the temperature down a little bit, have FCS come to the table and work through what a logical transition looks like and where the funding needs to flow to support that. So we're sitting here and we're trying to claw back money. The need's still in our community, and we need to figure out how to disperse that money, and maybe it stays with the position that we fund and its resources to supplement the GA program. Maybe it still goes to FCS if there's a targeted need and they can outline how they're going to use that money, but I don't want us to make a rash decision because, again, this is taxpayer money, and it's hard-earned, but it also goes to support people in our community that need it. It's the social safety net for our community, and without that, I mean, we just can't, I'm not comfortable, you know, taking that away because I'm feeling frustrated or upset that, you know, FCS made this decision. And they have every right to do that, but I think we need to bring the temperature down, have them come to the table and figure out what to do, and that's how I would propose we approach this.
So I have a suggestion. I've been working to keep my temperature down. I will tell you that the idea of bringing on a whole new program, that I am the only one currently on staff that knows how to run, is daunting. That said, I don't know what the answer is with the $21,000 because I don't understand FCS, their conclusion that serving the general assistance clientele is taking them away from their mission, because I thought that was the mission. So I think it's probably going to be a larger conversation than we can likely get to before the end of this budget process. What I would suggest, so that we're not asking the taxpayers for more money than we really need, we have the general assistance budget. We've always funded the things that people need. So if people need housing within the general assistance program, the town pays that bill, food, whatever it happens to be. So we have that budget, and we'll have to go through the process of getting our reimbursements for part of that budget back from the state. The piece that I wonder is if it's highly unlikely that we're going to have an answer to what is that $21,000 really for, and how should we use it to mitigate the new cost to the taxpayer, or should you continue giving it to FCS, which is a council choice, it's not a staff choice, and you're right, feelings shouldn't be part of it. I just wonder if the way to deal with that is to try to balance the budget as best you can, meaning absorb that, and if there is a use, we have ARPA money that is going to be reallocated, that is not going to get expended, which you can dig into that at any time. And making a decision to support a specific service that supports especially people in need is most definitely an appropriate use of ARPA. So that gives you the opportunity to have the full discussion that you want to have, maybe step away a little bit and let us get our ducks in a row so we know what the gap would be, and still support them if there are things that you would like to continue to support for the taxpayers.
Matt, I think I would agree with that position about taking the heat out of it if, if it was simply a matter of it goes back into a reserve account or it's going to sit here, but we're actually. But we're actually increasing our budget because of that decision in a not insignificant way. And we have to. We don't have a choice. So I'm not in favor of moving that, the 20, I'm, I'm in favor of using the resources that we have available to us to offset that because it is a direct impact to the taxpayer and it is a direct impact to the budget that we are really trying hard to keep minimized. And there's so many things in that budget, which we're going to hear about shortly, that we don't have any control over. Like the cost of insurance and, and being able to attract and retain employees to run our, our town government. That all costs money. And a lot of other variables in there. So I'm, I'm, I'm torn because I'm a gigantic supporter of that organization. But I can't see why we're going to continue to fund the organization when they clearly made their decision. They're breaking the partnership with the town and those are resources that we had previously put towards that effort and it's over. And I think we need to use that to offset the position that we're going to have to hire.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that sentiment. I just don't know where the, how they use that $21,000. And if we take it back and let's say it goes to, that's the sole support for the summer backpack program or something like that. I, I would have a hard time saying that that's not a viable and really good use of, of taxpayer money. So I, I feel stuck because I wish we had answers to some of those questions. And I'm just, I don't want to shortchange the people who desperately rely on these services because we're making a decision without all the information that we have or that we need to have.
So I can tell you that the, the application that was filled out, just to kind of maybe give some context, says that their total agency budget is $1,059,609. Of that, they have Freeport listed as contributing 69,558. So there's some component of our contracted amount and the other amounts in there. But they receive state funds. They get a little bit of money from Pownell. They do fundraising efforts. Their thrift shop brings in a huge portion. What they designate the, because their request is actually $31,000. The $21,000, they stipulate for just operations. So that's not specific programming. It's not for, like, the $5,000 for summer camp scholarships. There's no specific designation for that $21,000. And then the remaining $5,000 is for the capital reserve. So I don't know if that helps or gives you some context, but even throughout their application, there's no solid indication that says the money we receive from the thrift shop absolutely goes to just this. And your $21,000 goes to just that. It's, it's for general operations. They say 7% of their budget is spent on administrative costs. I'm assuming some of that goes towards, you know, some of that $21,000 goes towards just administrative expenses of, of running anything. So, and I, and I do just want to state that whatever the decision is, whatever the discussion is, perfectly fine. From a historical context, I do just want to put out there for you to contemplate that outside agencies or human services is what it used to be called. FCS has been an annual receiver of this for quite some time. And when we had a GA director in-house, there was also a contribution to FCS. Not saying it needs to continue that way. Your deliberations are appropriate and, and valid points that are being discussed. I just want full disclosure and context because at some point someone's going to bring it up. So I just want that information to be put out there. Rather, I'd rather have it come from staff than someone else popping up and saying, you've given us money in the past when you've had a GA director. So that's all I'm trying to do with that.
No, that's, I was just going to say that, that's fair and that's helpful. I, I mean, it's a reduction in their budget. Something's going to have to get cut. I just wish I had a better sense of what it was and it, whether or not it was something that was going to be impactful to the members of our community before I make my decision. And that's, that's a hard one.
Is there a way we can make it discretionary, that we can ask them to use it in a specific way? Would that alleviate some of this concern?
My, my whole issue is that they made a decision that we have to react to and we're going to have to pay for it. And this is how, I know what you're saying about services, but we're going to be providing services too. So it's not a heat of the moment thing. This is, they decided not to do this contract. We need the cash to be able to pay for what we need to do to do what they were doing. And they don't want to do anymore because it doesn't fit their mission. But I don't understand that at all because now we're trying to give money to do exactly the mission you're talking about. I, I, so that's, that's my concern and I, because we have to do this position now, this position, we need the money so it doesn't impact the taxpayer.
Yeah.
On that, it's, if we're giving money away, I don't think we should give money away until we have the town, I said this last time, where we needed to be. The excess money should be either going back to the taxpayer or into the capital program if we have it. And then if we have a really big boon, then let's give it away because then it's not impacting our taxes. Because every dollar we spend impacts taxes. And everyone says every year, oh, it's only a penny here. It's only a penny there. But last year it was only a penny and the budget didn't go down. And the year before that it was only a penny. And the year before that it was only a penny. Eventually we get all the pennies and no one has anything to live with.
And I think, you know, I just want to say that I completely agree with the frustration. I'm frustrated too. We had a workshop with them where this didn't come up at all and that was a month before this decision. There was obviously something leading to that, that wasn't shared. But it, it really does, for me, come down to exactly what Matt is saying of, I don't want to pinch pennies to then hurt people who need these services, especially when we're hearing from folks during public comment about costs are rising for everybody. There's clearly a demand for their services that won't go away if we have someone in-house doing GA. So I don't want to unintentionally hurt some of our most vulnerable population here in town.
With that said, well, we have to increase taxes because we have the new position. Guess what? That's going to whack everyone. So I think it's a very legitimate, I don't think we're punishing them. I think we are doing a business decision that we are trying to have the impact on all, everyone in town, not just the vulnerable, but a small group. And I will tell you, there's some residents that I know that have been here that are really struggling that when the taxes go up and they don't access the services of Freeport Community Services for whatever reason, that, that affects them. So I think we take the 24 and the 21 and it comes back. It doesn't offset our costs completely. But we are now delivering, you know, that service which we're required to by law. And I think that's more than appropriate.
There is an effort from Dan and I and Sophie to reach out and set up a meeting with the director of the program and their board or their board leadership to, to get to the bottom of this and find out what, what's going on. Although the communication to date has been extremely sparse.
And I also, you know, I know there has been some rescinding of support to our community services programs, our RSU5 as well. So I think there is a lot more going on here we're not aware of. That conversation feels really important. I know there are several counselors who are interested in that conversation as well. So I know we can't have three counselors in a space without it being a public meeting.
Well, maybe we make it a public meeting so we can have more participation. That, that's an easy way to fix that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, they've offered to come and talk to us. They should come to the next council meeting and talk to us.
I can issue a.
There's that. Yeah.
And then, and then we'd have some answers prior to having to vote on our budget. And I, I just, I agree with what you're saying, Daryl. Absolutely. You know, we have to make a good decision here. But without all the information, I struggle to know where that line is. And I also want to be mindful of the fact that this is still a partner of ours. It's still a pillar in our community. No matter what's happened to this point, we need to take the high road and try to have a positive and good relationship because this is important to the people of our town. And I'm not saying we're, we're trying to go off that path, but I think we need to be mindful of that because it's easy to say, well, they did this, so we'll do that. And that's a no-win game. We're all in this together. And I think that's something we really have to be.
I don't feel like we're not taking the high road by watching out for expenditures in a position that we found out days ago that we have to now fund and put into our FY25 budget.
I think, I think we're justified in being frustrated. And I think because there is obviously a lot of, people have a lot of feelings about this and rightfully so. And I think there's probably value in having it be a public meeting so there's full transparency and our conversation is accessible when we have to make that decision. So I support a public conversation with Sarah.
We've got two weeks so that we don't put Jessica into a corner with no room to move here on the numbers.
Don't forget, we're renting a space. We have a lease with them for $57,000. And what, I don't know what exactly, we get a room for storage and we get to use that room whenever we want to, I guess, which, how many times have we used it? This year, what, once, twice?
That's all right because Chief Goodman lost his conference room. So that will be a really good opportunity for him.
Yeah. And I don't have a problem with that. I'm just saying that we're giving them $50,000 for services that we don't particularly use. So, and obviously we're not a burden on them because we, we, our town plows the lots, right? We take care of all of that. They don't have to pay for that. So again, I, this is not a tit-for-tat thing. This is a business decision and we have to deal with it. And if, if we don't, I understand the most vulnerable, but all taxpayers are vulnerable. And there's some taxpayers that are more vulnerable and they're paying a tax. And now we're having a problem saying, hey, let's give back to the taxpayer, right?
Daryl, I thought I heard you say earlier that you were making a motion.
Yeah, well, at this point though, I'm sensing we, it won't pass if we include the $21,000. So I'm going to make the motion that we withdraw the $24,000, you know, from FCS funding for that position they had that. When we get more information, I think on the $21,000, then maybe we can come to a conclusion. But at least if we move forward and with the 24, which we were giving for the position, they decide they don't want it. I think that's more than fair to come back to us.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion to accomplish that.
That's all, that's all.
So it's only on the $21,000?
I, 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 I'll make a motion so we know where you stand. I make a motion to cut the $21,000 in donations to Freeport Community Services in this year's budget.
I'll second that.
All right. We just had a considerable amount of conversation. Let's have a vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
That's three. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails. Tie vote.
But with that said, I'd like to revisit the motion after we meet with FCS. Because I agree that that money should be used for the right purposes and whether or not that's with us or with them. I just want some more information before I make my mind up.
I fully agree with that.
Work hard to make that happen by June 18th. Okay, let's move on to other elements of the budget. Other questions for Jessica? Just a reminder that while we are routinely wowed and awed by Jessica's command of the budget and the numbers, it's not an infinite flexibility and that the fiscal year is ending inside of 30 days, which is an awful lot of work to be done to get everything set for a new fiscal year. I'm not saying that we're cutting off conversation. I'm just saying be mindful about how many individual changes we're going to be asking between now and the 18th and certainly between the 18th and the 30th of the month. Other questions or comments for Jessica about the operating budget? And we'll get to capital and TIF in just a second.
We, there was a, someone asking about the proposed environmental coordinator position. And I had a hard time remembering where we landed with that.
So we currently have that position. The position has been grant-funded. It's a shared position with Yarmouth. The intent was to continue to share the position. The grant funds run out mid-year. So not quite mid-year, I think three or four months into the year.
So is that included anywhere in this budget?
Yep.
The second half of the year picking it up or?
Yeah, it's, it's just maintaining that.
Effort.
Yeah. Part of it is that I think the intent at this point, the current person has given notice and will be leaving at the end of the month to go travel and have fun. But the intent is Yarmouth and Freeport working together to see if we can get another individual in that space and to revisit at the end of this fiscal year. Because I think Yarmouth's intent after this year is to have a full-time person. So it would at least get us started and as we begin to look at several environmental needs, what is the best solution for us?
All right. Last call for questions on the operating budget.
Jessica, can you just run through the, the mill rate impact for numbers again and the percent increase? Or adding in the.
All these changes?
Yeah.
Sure. So the net budget impact, the changes that have been incorporated, the net impact is $194,000. And on the municipal side, that's an eight cent increase to the mill rate. It went from 30 cents to 38 cents.
Okay.
And the lion's share of that is from the new position?
I would say it's equally split between the senior property tax relief program and the general assistance director position.
So that, the percent levy increase would take us from 12.37 to like?
15.29.
Okay. And then the overall total tax levy increase would go from 7.78 to?
8.44.
All right. Not seeing any further questions. Let's move on to the capital budget. Seems like years ago that we talked about the capital budget, but we had a fair amount of conversation. We had department heads. We combed through that. It's actually a relatively modest year in terms of capital expenditures, just because of the timing of where we are with the more expensive equipment. But we continue to fund the entire capital budget from the capital reserves, although they may not be as high as some finance directors might want them to be. We are still in a place where we are funding the entire capital budget and, and for the, at least next few years, out of that reserve, thanks to good planning and, and excellent fiscal management. Again, a reminder, the capital budget is for hard asset purchases, depreciable equipment and anything over $10,000 or is it $5,000? Anything over $5,000 in particular, hard asset, equipment or real goods. Daryl?
One question maybe for Earl. The program where we swapped the bodies around and stuff is working and you're comfortable with that? Do we, we don't need to change or do we?
It, it's working. It's not as fast as I would like it to be.
Okay.
But it is working. But the bed that we're replacing is our last half steel body.
Okay.
So it's not something that we could do what we're doing with the, the big wheel of a truck.
All right. So with this purchase coming up though, that will be all stainless?
It'll be all stainless and then we would be able to rotate it again, which I do think that's going to work, Mr. Daryl. It's just.
You have to have.
Getting the truck was our biggest holdup.
Good. Thank you, Earl. Eric?
I have a question probably for Chief Goodman. Going back to a conversation that we had had in our earlier capital conversation about new cruisers and the question about electric vehicles. And we had more conversation about electric and the issue of hybrids came up. I had opportunity this week to see a hybrid cruiser for a Massachusetts State Trooper. And I'm wondering whether that is something that has been explored, whether there are advantages, disadvantages, or something like that.
Yes. We currently have one hybrid cruiser in the fleet. The Maine State Police used, I think they ordered 30 hybrids and they eventually got rid of them. I think they ordered 30 hybrids and they eventually got rid of them after a year. Our hybrid was in the shop for about the first three months we owned it. Luckily, most everything was covered under warranty, but the lost time is definitely an issue. Now it seems to run okay. It's, definitely there's pluses and minuses. It's not anyone's favorite car to drive, but, you know, we continue to be open to exploring new technologies and applying them as they fit in with, you know, kind of day-to-day operations.
That's helpful, thank you. That's probably why I saw that Trooper parked at Logan Airport, not down on the turnpike, so.
All right, not seeing any other hands on the capital budget. The third slice, a much smaller slice of our spending for FY25 is our TIF budget. That's actually fairly prescriptive by the TIF agreement in terms of the funding. We heard some conversation earlier about economic development coming out of that. Any questions for Jessica about the TIF? We have to vote on that separately because it's different from the tax levy-driven budget, which we will do at our next meeting to vote on all three.
And I'm assuming my, oh geez, that was, sorry. I'm assuming my understanding is that the $25,000 discussed earlier tonight will be added in for the appropriation on the June 18th meeting.
If council agrees, but that's.
That's why I was bringing it up, to see if there was a will for a vote on that.
Can I ask, we have different TIFs, so I'm just wondering which one that is coming out of?
I would bring it out of the Destination Freeport TIF.
Can I ask, is there the possibility that, could you just give us a background about why $25,000 and not more, based on, if, since we're looking at much more than that in, in terms of increasing the package for this new employee?
So.
Just limit, the limitations of what else is available in that TIF, or what was that, what was behind that number?
So that number was based upon a conversation that I had with council leadership regarding ongoing conversations with FEDC, but it brings up a good point. What I would like is council's leave to build out a specific budget in the economic development arena and I can give you guys a, a one-pager on that. I think that after the 11th workshop, you might have a better sense on what FEDC's projects, plans are for the coming year.
All right, we all did our homework, Jessica, because I think we're out of questions. Thank you for all of that wonderful information. Again, for the general public, we're voting on these at our next meeting, 12 days before the end of the fiscal year. June 18th is our next meeting. So we, we have had a significant number of public hearings and public discussions at council and at separate workshops earlier this calendar year on the budget, so I'm hoping that we're not springing anything on someone in terms of what we're planning on for the town's budget for the coming year, notwithstanding the decision that we just had to make about funding a GA position, which is brand-new information. So, thank you, Jessica, and thanks, everyone, for the diligence and going through a dizzying amount of numbers and lines of ledger code to understand where we are with our spending.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is, we have a couple of action items here. Item number 160-24, to consider action relative to the reappropriation of $30,000 of funds remaining in the Sparcove Road project to replace a hoist at Town Wharf. Counselor Smith, could you please read the be it ordered to get it on the table?
Be it ordered that the reappropriation of $30,000 to funds remaining from the Sparcove Road project to replace a hoist at the Town Wharf be approved?
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Earl, you want to give us a little background on this?
Sure. Several months ago, we had an inspection from Maine Labor. They went around and one of the items that they found was our lift down at the wharf does not have a rating on it. So we looked at trying to get somebody to come in and give us a rating. That was going to cost us five grand. So me and Sophie had a conversation about it and it was her idea, I'm not going to take credit for it, that instead of looking short-term, look long-term and replace it maybe with something a little better. The idea was where we get the funds. We saved a little money on Sparcove, which was a capital project, too. So we would move that fund to take care of the lift.
This is a no-net gain decision to actually get a new lift at?
Yes, we, we're having trouble.
Town Wharf.
I, I had my first look at it probably a couple of months ago and it's been welded on several times, so it, it needs to be replaced.
Can you explain, just because I'm numb on this stuff, what is, what is the rating that you're actually, weight rating?
How much it can pick up. And there's nothing on it to, to restrict somebody from just picking up whatever they want to, so you have to have that rating on there and you can't pick up over that.
Thank you. Sophie?
So I just want to add to Earl's wonderful introduction that as soon as word got out that we were considering this, I received five emails from members of the working waterfront that use this as part of their daily jobs and it's really important. Some of those emails suggested some changes that we might make, so the plan would be to get the word out. I happen to know somebody who's good at getting the word out and gather a group of people to meet with Earl and Charlie to talk about what is necessary in terms of specs. The other plan, I'm calling this an emergency repair or replacement so that we can quote it out, get somebody here who can actually get it replaced so that we've got it for this summer season.
Right, Daryl?
My other question is, is the poles that the winch is mounted to in good shape, does that need to have attention?
We have a company look at that right now, but the indications are they are okay.
Thank you.
The foundation part of it, Daryl.
I'm, I'm actually talking to rigging, which this winch hangs on it, so if that fails?
That would all be replaced.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counsel Bernard?
Is there a possibility this goes over $30,000 or do you think that's enough?
Hope not.
Okay.
Hope not. There would, there is a possibility if we wanted to upgrade it to more than what it is now, that it would, excuse me, would go over that, that, that $30,000, yes. That's a very distinct possibility.
All right, thanks very much, Earl. The item's been moved and seconded. This is a no-net gain, reallocation of funds from one capital project to another. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero, Chris. All right, some great news. Our next item, ray, yay, yay, number 161-24, related to the appointment of Winter Giddings as the Freeport Community Library Director. Counselor Bernard, could you please read the be it ordered, then we can find out about our new staff?
I'd be delighted. Be it ordered that the appointment of Winter Giddings as the Freeport Community Library Director be approved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Courtney?
Great, yes.
Microphone is yours.
And at a good level, so that's nice. I didn't get yelled at for touching it. No, no, you scarred me, I'm not doing it. Yeah, so for those of you who don't know, I'm Courtney Sparks. I am the former Director of the Freeport Community Library and the new Human Resources Director here at Town Hall and I'm here to introduce Winter Giddings as our new library director. She is coming to us from Curtis Memorial Library in Brunswick. She was selected from a pool of talented candidates for her expertise in operations, programming, community engagement. Additionally, she has great experience at the state level on the Maine Library Commission, as well as the Executive Board of the Maine Library Association, and we just feel that her vision and values and commitment to libraries are a great fit for Freeport and the Freeport Community Library. And I'm looking forward to working with her and supporting her in her new role.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome, yeah. The podium is yours if you'd like to say anything, but you don't have to.
I'm just really excited to be here and to be working with the staff at Freeport. I've actually worked with them a little bit in the past. I, I actually designed their website, our website, about four years ago, so I am familiar with some of the full-time staff and that helped me know that this would be a really good next step and good fit for me, so.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thanks, welcome. All right, we have the motion on the floor, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's official. Our new library director.
I guess I should say, now, welcome aboard.
Great. Our last action item is an item that we tabled. This is item number 151-24, to consider action relative to a lease agreement for 55 Main Street, also known as the Bartol Library. We had discussed this and then we had an executive session. There were some suggestions made to clarify where we were with negotiations with a particular interested tenant, prospective tenant, and manager advises that we're ready to make an action item on that this evening. Sophie, is there any update you want to provide?
I would go into executive session for a few minutes because you asked us to do some negotiation and I'd like to make sure we've hit the mark.
Got it. Okay, so before we make that announcement, we'll go into executive session to finalize those, just to make sure everybody's up to snuff on that. So, Counsel Lawrence, could you please read the action to get us into executive session?
Okay, be it ordered, let's see, motion that the Town Council enter executive session. I can't do it myself.
Second. Second, all right, it's been moved and seconded. Daryl seconded. All those in favor to go into executive session?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're in executive session, this should be brief. Thank you, folks.
12:50, 13:00.
All right, I think we're back on. We made a motion and we're out of executive session to handle the second to last item on our agenda. We have the action item on the floor, no, we have to read the be it ordered. So Counsel Lawrence, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the town manager be authorized to enter into a lease agreement with treasure, with Island Treasure Toys for use of property at 55 Main Street, aka the Bartol Library.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We're, I think we want to empower the manager to execute on the terms as described and, and go ahead and execute on that order.
I agree.
Right. Do we need to have that in the motion, that we're authorizing the manager?
We're voting on that, right?
Right.
Yeah, I think enter.
It says.
Enter into a.
Oh, the manager be authorized, there we go, it's right there, okay. I'm not reading it.
I said it.
Yeah, you did. Great. We need to, Daryl seconded?
Daryl.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero. All right. For a long time now, we haven't had a lot of certainty, but now we can say we have a 10-year tenant in the Bartol Library.
Ni-ha.
Wow-hoo. All right, so we have two things left.
Public comment on this?
Yeah.
Do you have to do that? Okay.
Yep, we want to make sure we have an opportunity for public comment for those joining us virtually.
It's just the media, it might want to, but normally doesn't.
Okay, no other, no other hands up? All right, so no, no public comment from our virtual attendees. Our last item of business is, very brief, discussion of process for appointing interim director seats, and I asked for this to, to be put on here just so that we can have a little bit of clarification. At our last meeting, we took action to name and appointee to the Freeport Sewer District Board of Trustees and I wasn't even aware that we actually had the authority to do that until an hour before, not even an hour, yeah, about an hour before the council meeting. And complete oversight on my part was, we didn't check with the board chair about that process. And I had made an assumption that there had been a vacancy for a while because the previous director of the sewer district passed away very unexpectedly and there was some shuffling and a board member has stepped in to take, take over that role and for whatever reason, I thought that that was a long length of time and it turns out that it was actually very short and the board chair and board members were caught quite off guard that we'd already taken action on appointing somebody. So, which made me think about what other boards do we have the authority in our charter to appoint interim members and should we have that process a little bit more clarified so that we don't put staff or candidates or certainly our board chairs of our committees or associate organizations in a tight spot? Again, thinking we were trying to be efficient and get somebody appointed, we ended up stepping on some toes pretty hard and Dan and I had a conversation with the board chair and a couple of members of the sewer district board and we've resolved that and it's, it's smoothed out. I'm going to go to the next Freeport Sewer District Board meeting to share that information. So I thought it would be good for us to have a discussion about how much time there might be before we nominate someone and, and maybe just articulate and we can give this direction to the manager to articulate a little bit of process for our governance, but I wanted, before we make that, I just wanted to bring that up and see if anybody has any input on that. Daryl?
I'm wondering if maybe we should contact the specific board, say, we know you have a opening here, please get back to us within 30 days and then we can take action. That way, I think, it would open up a lot of communication, so.
Sure.
You know.
The nominations committee has already evolved into having regular meetings where we interview candidates because we have so many openings and that seems to be working as we're getting more people, thanks to Chris and, and our persistent messaging about inviting people to, to come in and apply and find out about our committees, but I think that's an excellent suggestion that we give all the committee and board chairs 30 days to let the council know before we take any action.
The, my only, the only thing I'd want to add is, when we talk about interim directors, you're talking about the quasi-municipal, so it would be the sewer district and the RSU board. The, the way it works is you appoint until the next annual town election, which is in November of each year. So, if you gave 30 days' notice before you began a public process with the, the sewer district, if you said, we now know that this is open, we'll give you 30 days and then we're going to appoint, I think that the piece that is missing from that would be perhaps contacting the sewer district, have the, the chair contact the sewer district or the school board chair and say, we're aware that this is happening pursuant to state law. Our plan is to advertise this for 30 days and, you know, if you have any input you want to give, feel free to provide that to the appointments committee. I, unfortunately, in one of the towns I worked in, we kept going through school board seats where people would start and then resign and when we first started, we gave people the impression that they kind of got a say in who got elected, which works really well, or appointed, which works really well if everything's going well. And then we had a situation where the council. situation where the council wanted to kind of make a point in their appointment, that they were looking for somebody that was different than who the school board kind of wanted, and it created real upheaval. So I think I'd be just careful about how much input you give, because it doesn't say the sewer board can elect, or the school board can elect, it's really clear it's the municipal officers.
All I'm saying is, if we notified, like, the chairman of the sewer board that we realized there's an opening, we would be taking action in 30 days.
Okay.
That's most my intent. That way, they have time to discuss it at their meeting, and this just was, just, you know, we were very efficient here and got it done, no, there was no malice intended. So that's, I think, just that line of communications, and I would think any position on the school board, the sewer board, 30 days is not going to have a significant impact on that.
Matt?
What's the application process look like? Should that just be standard, or?
I, I think so. I think the, we, we have a procedure in place, there's a form, it requires some information to come in with the candidate, who fills out the form, the clerk collects that, and would circulate that to the nominations committee, so we can articulate what that process is when we make the first initial communication to the various board chairs, or representatives, or whoever it is that they elect to be the recipient of that. All right, so that's not an action item, I just wanted to bring that up, that we're going to tighten up on that, so we don't, well, so I don't, or any future board chair stepping in again with, thinking they're being efficient and causing a wave.
So how long was it before, I mean, was it 15 days, or was it a month and a half?
It turns out that the sewer board had not yet even publicly announced that they were in a place where they were going to start advertising, that they had a vacancy. It was within the same week.
Right, but the.
But they.
It's been a long time since.
Yeah, yeah. It, they just hadn't taken it up yet, that was the issue.
I get that, but if they haven't taken it up within 30 days, and, or even within two months, because it's been, what, nine months?
Well, there was a distinction between the, the departure of the director of the place and a board vacancy. We only have jurisdiction on the board vacancy.
All right, I get that.
And so that, that board seat hadn't actually been open for, for more than a week?
Yeah.
Right, because Sarah had just been promoted.
The seat was vacated the, as soon as they offered her the position, as soon as she accepted the position by state law, you can't sit in both roles, but that's neither here nor there.
Yeah, anyway, we're just trying to improve on the communication.
Yeah, no, I get, that's shitty, but.
Yep. Anyway, so that's how we're going to move forward on that. We'll articulate that, we can report on that, or share it. Sophie, probably share it, the manager's report.
Should I make a motion to end the meeting?
No, we have an executive.
We got executive session, right.
Oh.
Personnel matters.
I'm sorry, I looked right over that. There's a second one, yep, okay.
I'll make the motion in our executive session, number two.
Second. All right, been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?